...backup, that means in case your machine is accidentally wiped, that you can restore it from the backup, so we want to make sure that, you know, it's clear how we can get things backed up so that we don't lose any data because we are unpaid and we are donating our time and we prefer not to lose data if we actually spend time on our personal time to develop stuff for the town and then have some IT guy go wipe it out. Lastly, I would like to see the security policy. I understand that, and as any company, most companies do say that they do have the right to look at your emails. The words that were in here about reviewing council members' emails does cause me a little bit of concern, so I'd like to see what the policy is, who does it, et cetera, and under what conditions somebody would be reviewing my emails because there are some sensitive emails. So, for example, if I have a concern about, let's say, for example, a police officer and I write a letter to the chief, I wouldn't want somebody there reviewing it other than the chief. So, I think that there are some concerns that we want to make sure that there is some confidentiality and judgment, good judgment, being made and maintained in reviewing people's emails. Else I'll start using my own personal email, which is what everybody else around here does, which I think is wrong because then it's not discoverable.
I was just going to say that if you write a letter, an email, to the chief, it's not confidential.
Well, it could be discovered under a public record request.
He's your example, see, if he writes a letter to me asking an opinion, that is confidential and can't be discovered. And that's why I think the staff has been kind of talking about, we're going to be looking at in more depth, a little bit better email policy review. Good point is raised. I don't think you're going to find anybody necessarily reviewing your email, but they might review those received by the chief. And therein, I mean, it doesn't matter, you might not want it to be reviewed, but on his end...
I use that as an example, I'm sorry.
Exactly. And therein, you know, I think we need to have a little bit better handle on how it's going to work. This is kind of new ground for us, too.
Right, but having, you know, who's going to have access to your emails is important, and I think an email policy so that the right things can be discovered is there because, you know, as I've pointed out to a number of people, as well as, well, even for yourself, Bill, you know, we send you emails, but the ones that you get on a regular basis are your Yahoo email, which is not the official town one. And the same thing with many of the other council members. I use exclusively, for town business, my town email address, and I think that really, for official business, that's what we should be using, because if it's discovered, that's where we are. Now, there were emails that leaked out, and occasionally leak out here and there, and we can't trace them, and so I think it's important that we have an email policy here, please, City Manager. Thank you.
So, I think that what we're going to do, that email policy is not part of this...
What we're doing here?
Well, I think it has to do with the iPad, so I think what we're looking at is the use of computer hardware and software as it relates to the iPads that were purchased for council members' use. So, I think City Manager has some changes to this language that you'd like to present that may be more powerful.
And as we bring back the HR manual, it'll probably have an email policy within that for the councils review, so that'll be coming. But the mayor's correct, this is just purely related to the iPad. So, the beginning of some changes are on page four of six where it says, "Option B," where it says, "And must have cellular data 3G, 4G, et cetera capability," that's deleted.
The "and" from the "and"?
From "and" to the period. These devices must support the applications required by the town, period. Then on page five of six, at the top of the page, where it says, "Cellular data use, not Wi-Fi outside of the continental USA is extremely expensive," therefore, that is all deleted, and the new sentence begins, "Town-issued iPads may only be used outside of the continental U.S. in Wi-Fi mode," period. The town will not pay data fees for council members, and that continues. Then under paragraph, section two there, it says, second sentence down, "Only personal use which is lawful, and eliminating incidental and minimal, and which does not result in a gain or advantage to user or loss of the town is permitted."
I don't know what that means.
That's what that means?
You can't set up a plan.
Yeah.
You can't run a business off your iPad.
Yeah, well, I... Well, actually, you know, there are going to be questions. "Lawful" might mean you cannot use it to run a campaign. That is illegal. You can't use, and there's going to be things that are going to come up, and I would expect that as issues arise and you're thinking, hm, I wonder if this is going to create some kind of a problem, that you call one of your attorneys and we can weigh in. Brown Act violations can occur on it. You email him, he emails her, she emails him, and guess what? You just violated the Brown Act.
We can do that right now.
Exactly, but you can't use a government computer to do that.
We'll take away your iPad.
This is the government, this is the government computer issue.
It'd be illegal anyway under the Brown Act.
That's true.
You didn't use a government computer.
Right, but what this is saying, this constitutes a higher, not only is it illegal and a Brown Act violation, you lose your right to use the iPad. That's the constitution.
Oh, this, that might be a real positive.
Yeah, I was smiling, you notice, I don't have one.
The last change is under...
All my kids are great kids, they use iPads, but these are all the latest models.
Under section four, data, we're going to strike, "All iPads used by council members must be equipped with cellular data 3G, 4G, et cetera, to allow council members to have access to their town information that has struck them." And then the word "will" in the next sentence is changed to "may." The town may purchase a data plan for, and then strike the word "all town-issued devices." And that's the...
Are these going to have data plans or not?
They won't. Probably if they're all just Wi-Fi, no G as we indicated, then they're not going to have a data plan.
So, when we're out walking the bike lane thing, we won't be able to...
Not if they're all Wi-Fi devices, no.
Log on soon, Dave.
How much we get town-wide Wi-Fi?
Are they equipped with data plan? Do they have the...
I thought the iPad 2s came with a data plan.
No, no, you can buy it either way.
I should have got the data plan.
Well, I don't think they did.
They did, obviously.
No, there's no phone on it.
So, those are the extent of my changes to the law.
Does everybody feel comfortable about this?
Apple Face Plan.
No, Facebook. I can do it on my phone. Can you do it?
No, the space time, we could have had remote meetings. I could have been over in Europe, use my cellular type. What would it cost us to turn the exam and get new ones?
All right. Goodness. We have to, we have to move on. Lou, you want to make a public statement here?
Yes, I do. I have concerns.
I'm glad you do. I think...
I'll make it real quick.
Okay. All right. All right.
Are we talking about iPads for strictly the five council members?
Yes.
Or does that open up a bag of worms where the town manager then has to have it, and Teresa has to have it, and then Mike has to have it?
I think they already have theirs.
Those guys already have it.
They already have theirs.
Five, okay. And they range anywhere from $400 to $800 apiece.
You know, don't look at me.
Well, they were bought at the sale price. That's why they don't have any of this stuff. They were like, I think they were about $400, yes.
$400 for main storage, and that should, storage area goes up, it increases by a couple of dollars.
No, you can't, yes, that's correct, that's correct.
Plus, then, after you buy these, you have a monthly fee.
No.
No, the data plan is not included. No data plan. No monthly fee.
Okay. Now, my greatest concern is that if you have confidential information on these, what happens if they're lost or stolen, and these things happen every day? You've got valuable information on that.
The data that's on it is going to be public information. It's going to be these books. If you put anything else on it, it's going to be, you know, your email, which you could lose your PC, and, you know, but this, all this information that's in here is public information. Now, Mr. Dobby puts his private finances on there, and he loses it, then that's his problem. Sorry.
Well, we wouldn't want confidential information going down to sources that shouldn't have it.
We don't get confidential. Everything we get is, yeah, right.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate that. Since we had a public comment open, anybody else would like to say anything about this iPad development? Excuse me. Okay, I'm going to bring you back to council. With the changes that City Manager has made to this document, are we ready to approve this iPad policy resolution?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Good for you.
And I also need it with the proviso that these were state-of-the-art when we bought them.
I have a motion by Councilmember Dobby, a second by Councilmember Whitmer. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A unanimous approval of our iPad hardware and software policy.
As amended.
As amended, by City Manager, with comments from Councilmember Whitmer. Okay, so, that was all of our consent agenda items, and so we are going to move on to our public hearings, which we have none of, and then our regular agenda items, 23 through 26. Item number 23 is the appointment of one member to fill the vacancy for the Transportation Committee. This has been continued for a couple of months because we didn't have a full council, and now we have all five members present. And then the other item on this agenda is to appoint two council members to the Community Center Advisory Committee. So, the city clerk is passing out our ballots for the Transportation Committee member appointment, and are there any public comments at this point regarding this? I see one public comment. Remember?
Madam Mayor and City Council, I wanted to recommend Gary Lauder, who's one of the applicants for the Transportation Committee. I met Gary this year a couple times, he was recommended to me by friends, is a very bright guy, he's a venture capitalist, a citizen of the town. It's been difficult oftentimes to recruit qualified members. Gary has a real interest in traffic and transportation, and all of his friends will tell you that he's absolutely brilliant, and he's published a, he's been on a TED Talk, if you're not familiar with TED Talks, there, TED stands for Technology Education and Design, it's been going on for about 15 years, and it's the best and brightest, and they give, people are invited to give lectures at conferences, and it's published on the internet, you can see it on the internet, or you can get it on your Apple TV, and Gary's got a talk on there on traffic and transportation. I just think he'd be a great addition to this committee. Smart guy, very interested, nice guy, not difficult, not harsh, not argumentative, and I think would be a great committee member, so I just want to recommend him to the council for...
Thank you. Any other public comments about this appointment?
Yes, I'd like to add a couple confirming statements about Gary Lauder also, and I'm looking at the applications, and I see that the other candidate is Sandy Kay, who has indicated that he never even attended any meetings of the body in which he wishes to serve, and Gary Lauder has said, yes, he has, and he's contacted members, and he's done a lot of other things. He's actually started technology companies that evaluate and look at traffic measuring equipment. He really knows the state-of-the-art, not just in traffic technologies, but on security technologies. He is extremely engaged in issues relating to Atherton traffic, living on Atherton Avenue, and has been looking at these issues and working on them, and has some proposals and ideas, and I think it would, it's kind of a travesty if we don't actually take people who want to be engaged and who are smart and capable, who are willing to volunteer their time, especially when they are relatively high-powered people, who otherwise we don't see enough of in this town, so I highly recommend that you consider him and help the town move ahead on some issues that it has with traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this item before we take a vote? Any members of council wish to make a statement before we vote?
Neither candidate here.
I don't see either candidate here.
Gary was here twice in the two last meetings, and I think this meeting he wasn't able to make.
That's right. Yes, yeah, so, shall we take a vote? You ready?
Is this going to be for a flip time period now?
Oh, that's it, that's the other question. So, we're filling a vacancy, and council needs to kind of talk about this a little bit. We, I think last year, because of delays and the, you know, the busyness of our council, we didn't get around to filling vacancies until June 30th, and so we kind of changed our policy to have these committees' appointments start at June 30th, whereas in the past, it had always been, I think, April 30th, somewhere in the spring, which seems to be a more reasonable timeframe, and so we're, so at this point, right now, what's in front of us is to fill the vacancy from whatever we appoint right now, February, until June 30th, when the committee reorganizations are up for their regular terms, or if we want to fill this vacancy for now through the regular term, that it would be from June 30th on, I guess, it's a four-year term.
Twenty sixteen to three.
Twenty sixteen, it's a three-year term. Oh, okay, sorry. So, that's what council needs to decide also. Any comments on that?
Well, I guess the position, I guess there was a gentleman that got appointed that he didn't live in Atherton, or he was confused as to, he lived in the town or something, but he was appointed until the sixth, until 2016, so, you know, if you're proposing that we go with having, you know, half the committees from now on, that we would have, you know, a staggered committee so that we don't replace them, then that's, I think that that's reasonable that way, there's always some longevity carried over.
If you want to do that, that's changing your policy that's in print. My suggestion is, you know, this, this is a resolution that establishes rules, but you could always suspend rules if you want to as a council. So, agree to waive the rule in this case if you want to, but then come back and change the rule if you want to do something prospectively for everybody.
Why don't we, since we talked about, well, we talked about last time, that perhaps we need to relook at that policy one more time.
And since it's not on the agenda tonight...
We can't talk about it.
Can't talk about it. There's no problem.
But we're going to waive the rule for this particular appointment?
If you want to.
If we, if we would waive it, we could then set what the term would be? You okay with that?
You certainly have the ability to do that.
The new resolution that we just approved last August gives council the discretion to appoint, you get the discretion to appoint past the June 30th, 2013 deadline, so it's entirely up to them. There's no rule that is silly.
Well, I think the question was make this a shorter term, not make it a longer.
And that says that the seat is vacant, and, again, I'm not, this, this, this one is certainly vacant, and I don't see a problem with that, but I think that what they're talking about is changing the policy in the long term, and if we're going to do that, then let's bring that back and talk about it. There's some other things in here that probably ought to be looked at, too, so, I mean, although you just looked at it, it's continuing to evolve.
So, are the terms on the Transportation Committee staggered now?
No.
They're not?
No, I think that they're all, all those are four years, I think. I think they're all...
I think they're staggered as far as the ending date.
Yeah.
Because I remember when we appointed, it was all five, it was five people applied and five people got in, and I thought they were all the same.
They always were the same, I just can't remember if they actually staggered the Transportation Committee.
I don't think we have a stagger.
But they always were the same.
Don't think they stagger?
I don't remember if we staggered the Transportation Committee.
I don't remember.
Yeah, because they all came off and they all went back on, it went back on.
So, they should be staggered, I would assume. Why don't we start, why don't we start with staggering?
We can't, number one.
Yeah, so let's put that, let's bring that back, we can't do that tonight.
We could do it, we could do it to the point of appointing the person till the June, then reconsider.
Reconsider at that point.
And in the meantime, take a look at the committee structures here.
You could always reappoint him at that time as well.
Right, the June 30th, 2013, but nobody else is up at that point. Everybody else has a three-year term to 2016.
For sure? I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that that's it.
Please, please, pardon me from wrong, but they only serve the pleasure of the council, and the council can adjust their terms for the first project.
Sure. You know, I might be able to find out, hold on for a second, I have this on myself, I can get on the line, I can find out what they are. I think they're staggering.
Yes, but to do that, technically, you really ought to change the resolution...
Correct, which we can do.
Which you can do, and I think that's probably smart, and if you want to have all your committees staggered, then go through, and you're going to have to come up with some members, okay, you got converted to be a little shorter, and some are going to be a little longer.
Most of the committees are staggered.
And that's, well, most, most towns, that's how it's done, so, you know, you always have some with experience on your committees.
So, the council could do that at the same time?
I kind of think it's a little...
Don't pick on them.
Short-sighted, if we just, if we appoint somebody, go through all of this from now until June 30th for a four-month period, and then, you know, I think that's not...
Well, he'd be a year and a half, he'd be a year and a half. A year plus a couple months, because it's still 2014. If we go to, if we make it stagger to 14...
It was 2016.
Yeah, so he gets the rest of this year and then a half of next year. So, it's a year and a half appointment if we want to do it a two-year term.
Madam Mayor, hang on a second. The City Manager's just told me that the person that's leaving's term expires in 2016.
So, that's what we should...
If you apply someone to the common place, if you hire, if you put somebody into, somebody who's left's position, they serve out the term.
That's what I think.
And that's what, you know, you can do that just by saying, he's appointed to serve out the term, and that takes him to 2016.
That's what I think.
We're evaluating policy.
I just checked the roster, and they're not staggered at all. They're all expired at 2016.
Okay, well, we'll have to bring that back to council, okay?
And then you can adjust the terms of the resolution at the same time.
But for right now, we are appointing this new Transportation Committee member to fill out the term till 2016 of the vacating member.
We have a three-to-two vote for Gary Lauder.
Okay, thank you. So, we will, City Clerk, will you notify Mr. Lauder of his appointment to the Transportation Committee to fill out the term of the vacation, vacating member? Okay. Going on?
CCAC?
Oh, the CCAC, right, okay. So, we're going to appoint two council members to be involved with the Community Center Advisory Committee, and I have talked with one of our council members who has been involved with not only the Blue Ribbon Task Force for many years, and the Town Center Task Force preliminarily in the beginning, and very involved with that, and so Councilmember Dobby, I'd like to appoint as one of the ad hoc committee members to serve along with me. So, the two members to work with the CCAC would be myself as mayor and Councilmember Dobby.
Actually, it's not an ad hoc committee, it's a standing committee.
Right, it's a standing committee, it's a Brown Act, they may. I don't know why I got that in my head, that, you know, we're doing ad hoc. And so I guess, could we appoint an alternate in the event that one of us is unable to attend, like we do some of our other standing committees?
Hang on a second.
Yeah, we do other standing committees.
The problem is I don't have the CCAC...
Charter.
Charter, yeah.
It didn't say to do an alternate. Okay, we'll, we'll deal with that later, so, if that's okay with you, Councilmember Dobby?
Yes, I will accept it.
Thank you.
You certainly, Madam Mayor, you could appoint an alternate if you should so decide.
Would you like us to appoint an alternate in the event that you're traveling abroad and we, you know...
And you can't use your iPad?
And you can't use your iPad internationally.
Unless you're at a thorough...
In a Wi-Fi hotspot?
I think it'd be a good idea to have an alternate, but do you want me to suggest an alternate?
IB.
I would suggest Mr. Whitmer as an alternate.
Man, I'd love to be on the committee.
As long as it's clear, the alternate does not participate with the other two members to create a Brown Act violation, that's certainly appropriate.
I understand.
Does that seem clear?
I would be pleased. If one of the two of you cannot fulfill your duties...
Don't break my legs, okay?
No problem, I'm happy to participate.
All right, so, so that's, that's done, and that does not need council approval. That's our appointment. Okay, so moving on to item number...
I believe it does require council approval, because it's standing.
Oh, because it's not an ad hoc committee?
Yeah, it's a standing committee.
Oh, my gosh, I thought it was all my doing here. Okay. So, we, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Another unanimous decision, isn't this great? Okay. Moving on to item number 24, fee waiver request, end-of-year picnic for graduating fifth graders at Enstal Schools, use of Holbrook Palmer Park carriage house. City Manager, would you like to present this request?
Well, you have the staff report, it's the pleasure of the council. The council is the only body that can waive fees. We have the request come in, I can't waive that fee, they made a request, which body could? The City Council, so here we are.
Okay. Does council have any comments on this?
I do.
Okay, Councilmember Dobby?
I'm not concerned about the amount of money we're waving here, but I am seriously concerned about the fact that we are creating a situation that could end up biting us, because, you know, I remember when we used to put those posters up at the junction of Marsh Road and Middlefield, and...
The banners.
They, we ended up having some concerns because we were about to stop a poster being put up by a group that I won't mention, and we looked at it, and we said, well, we probably would, could be sued for discrimination under those circumstances, and as a result, we made a decision, only posters directly related to Atherton would be allowed up there. But in this case, it's not the question of the, of the amount of money involved. I am very concerned that we're creating a precedent here, where, for instance, if Menlo Atherton School decided they wanted to use some of these facilities, and they came up to us and asked for a fee waiver, that we said, no, that they could tell us we're discriminating. So, I think before we do this, I, it's not a question of the amount of money, I think it's a worthwhile thing for the school, but I don't want us, I think we need a policy in this before we allow this to take place.
I have to, I have to agree with Councilmember Dobby's, it's a question of where you start and where you stop. There are also private schools in this community, such as Menlo School, and they could say, well, you're doing it for the public schools, why not for us? And so it does create a problem, and we don't have a clear policy as to, under work circumstances, we would do it, and I echo the concern that, because I've heard a lot of concern, as I think everybody who's sat in the mayor's seat has heard, that, that when a group gets denied putting up their banner at the end of Marsh Road, and it's, so a similar thing is going to happen here, so I think that, you know, until we have a clear-cut policy that we can agree with, under these circumstances, we'll waive it, or for these groups, we will not charge, I don't think that we should be offering concessions on a piecemeal basis, regardless of who it is and for how much it is. I agree that $250 is not a big deal, I mean, seriously, but, and it's not that it's the school, it's fifth graders, it's not the issue either, it's a question of the fairness thing, and being seen to be discriminatory when we finally say stop.
Okay, other council members?
My heart says, let's, this is a no-brainer, let's go ahead and waive this, but my head says, we better think this through, and I think that the reasons articulated by the two prior council members, I think, are reasonable. are reasonable reasons why. I agree that this fairness issue, where you draw the line, when we have policies, we don't want to get in a situation where people realize that we have policies, but they can come and appeal to our good nature and have these waivers provided, if they give them no pressure on us. So I concur that we should not issue this waiver.
Do you want to make a comment?
It's been said.
Okay. That's, my initial feeling was, gosh, you know, it's a nominal amount, you know, it's a good cause, why not? And then hearing my fellow colleagues' reasons and rationales, it is, it's kind of setting a precedent that we don't want to set without having a policy. So I think that this is, this is a situation that we will have to deny the request. I don't know if they're doing any fundraising to host this, you know, to raise money. Personally, I'd be happy to, you know, write a small check to help out if it came to that, so. Just let that be part of the...
Over.
Yeah, so any public comment on this? Seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for a motion.
I move that we deny this request and further request that staff take a stab at a policy that would preclude this from becoming an issue for us sometime in the future.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Pass this unanimously. Okay, so moving on to item number 25, which is a report from our Public Works Director, Mike Khashawaki, regarding the Community Center Master Plan consultant selection update. Would you like to give your report, please?
Yes. Mayor, ladies and members of the City Council, this item we're asking for council approval to prepare and distribute a request for proposals to a master plan for their community center. This is a result of council direction received at your special council meeting held on February 12th. One of the things we want, we do want to note is that per the purchasing ordinance, typically, the council would want to actually approve the actual request for proposal prior to sending it out. But in order to, you know, get the RFP out as soon as possible, we're requesting for that waiver. One of the things, though, as City Manager Robert mentioned earlier this evening, is that once we do have the RFP finalized, now that you do have two council members on your CCAC, we would be very happy to share the RFP and get your comments and incorporate your comments prior to sending it out. We are working, we are currently at work, and we expect, well, we will have the RFP ready to distribute by March 1st. We would recommend that it's out on the street for 30 days, which is a pretty typical period for this type of project. We also believe it'd be good to have a pre-proposal meeting, which we are currently planning in scheduling for the week of March 11th, and with the proposals being due the first of April.
Do any members of the council have any clarifying or technical questions to ask staff before we open it for public comment? Just any specific questions?
Well, I have some comments. I don't know in the right place or not, but...
Yeah, but...
You know, my concern about this is that I think we might be making a meal out of this and spending a lot of money on it. You know, bottom line is, as far as a master plan goes, we've only got some land available. I mean, we know pretty much everything here. We know where the rail lines are, where every other building is, where the streets are. So what my concerns is, in the RFP, we don't want to make it too complicated. In other words, and the more complicated it is, the more money we're going to have to spend. You know, as far as a master plan goes, there's only so many places we can put things. And I think that I certainly want to see it before it goes out. And I would also request that the alternate to the committee have a look at it, because he's good at this kind of things.
Well, that's going to be difficult. You can't do that.
Till you hit three. You hit three, that's a Brown Act violation.
So, all right. I certainly want to have a look at it. My comment was that we put the purchasing policy requirement to have RFPs come to the council for a number of reasons. There was questions about a number of procurements that went through. There was questions about maybe things weren't thought all the way through when they got sent out. And, you know, our council said that you can't change those without then reissuing the RFP. This isn't a trivial amount. It's one and a half times our budget. It's, you know, roughly, you know, 1.5% of our budget. It's 100, over $100,000 is what you're saying it could actually be up to. And I think that we should have a, we should have a good look at it. You know, we had the special meeting. The mayor called the special meeting not to rush the project, because it was, it could have waited eight days for the meeting. But we had it to give special light, as she said, to give special light to an important project and to allow the community to see we were taking action on something, and to get community action and not have it buried on a long agenda that might go long into the night with people pulling lots of items, okay?
Oh, excuse me.
So, I think that there's no reason to rush this. There's not a reason to delay it, but there's not a reason to rush it. I think we need to do it right. And I, for one, am not in favor of not seeing it before it goes out, whether I was on the committee or not, because I couldn't share it with the fellow council members. So how can two people who have their specific interests and their specific skills speak for the rest of us without talking to the rest of us? It doesn't make sense to say, well, we're going to have two people that are in the club, they're going to be the ones that are going to make the decision.